All right, um, call the order, we'll have the introduction of the hearing of guests. And speaking of that, let's start over here. Go right ahead. I mean, just introduce yourself, we'll come back and get you.
My name is Giselle Howell.
Can we use the lead, would you give the preamble?
Tony Harris.
Kimberly Blom.
Shannon Dennison.
Tonight, we've got Shelley Williams with us, he's our, our attorney. All right, um, I'm gonna go ahead and review other parts here then, right?
This is Tom Morris.
I'm gonna let you go, just go ahead, Tom Morris. You'll do your presentation.
All right. Uh, as I said, my name is Giselle Howell, I'm a member of the Main Street Church of Christ. We have been in that location since about nineteen fifty-nine or nineteen sixty. And since that time, the library and the church have had a mutually good relationship. We've traded some parcels of land, uh, they have given us an easement or a right of way. They've helped with snow removal, sealing of blacktop, uh, some landscaping, some repair, so it's been a good relationship. And, uh, this is kind of just our introduction to the fact that we know that you all are going to be moving. And the property, uh, assembly will be, I don't know how it's gonna be sold. I don't know what the procedure is, whether it's sale, bid, auction, whatever, you may not even have gotten that far with the process. But we, as members of the Main Street Church, are primarily interested, of course, in who the new tenants will be if we did not buy the property. We are interested, and I noted that when the building was built or the property was bought, there were three parcels that were bought. There were two on Locust Street and one on Main Street, next to Casper. And in order to get an entrance from Main Street and also from Locust Street. Well, we use both of those entrances as well, in fact, the library gave us a right of way to use this one in the back from Locust Street. What we would be interested in is for you all to go about the procedure, thinking about the possibility of, when you do sell the property, if we cannot buy the whole property, if possibly it could be parceled out, then we would have an option to buy the Main Street portion of the library's property. We will be significantly lacking in parking spaces. If all of the land goes to one bidder, we are a growing congregation, we use more than our lot in the parking lots. And some of you'll have a map, uh, and that they're available to look at how the land is parceled out and we divided it up. We have about maybe eighteen parking spaces, I'm not sure how many the church has, but, uh, we are, we are, we would be severely limited in that case, and we are just asking for you all to consider the possibilities if and when the property does sell. If there might be an option to divide it, and we would have a chance to either bid on or in some way purchase the Main Street part of this particular property. Probably a few other things.
So what, what would that be on, on this map? Because I was, I was thinking, looking at the map, you were gonna ask for something else.
There's several different maps, uh, there's a lot of legal, I mean, there's a lot of deeds, there's a lot of conveyances, there's a lot of writing about easements. So somebody like Shelley or somebody would have to go look at the details and just see what the possibilities might be. But do you all have a plan for selling the building and the property yet? Or is that something the state has to do or the lib- some library commission?
We haven't gotten that far in the, in the, but on the, on the map, what would you be interested in?
Uh, well, the part there next to Casper Lane across from the church.
You're talking about this here, which is the entrance to Main Street?
That's, that's, that's right. We have, we've traded, like you can see, parcels. Uh, this would be of interest to us, this is.
We, we, uh, we would have to be careful because, um, the property was acquired with taxpayer dollars, so we've got to keep in mind that we need to protect and get the most money we can out of what we've got.
Right, I understand that. Now, the other point I'd like to make is, is this, this throughway from, uh, Main Street to Locust, it has become more and more of a problem through the years, as far as activities after the library closes and we're not in services. Uh, you can go check with the police records and check with a lot of other people. There are a lot of tenants around here. There are a lot of people that, you know, border the library property. And if it would continue to be a through area, I think that, that, that's kind of a concern to us too. Maybe to whoever the new tenant might be if somebody buys this building. But, uh, it's, uh, not a city street, it's not maintained by the city. It's, uh, probably the library does ninety-nine percent of the maintenance and upkeep of that, but that's just something to be aware of in the future. And that's all I have, if you have more questions.
Anybody got any questions?
I've got one.
Yes.
How much is this property worth per se?
How much you offer? I mean, that's what, that's what a property is worth, whatever you're willing to give, and I'm willing to take.
I don't need building, I was curious, so what?
I don't know.
It hasn't been appraised for several years, other than for insurance appraisal. The insurance appraisal is, you know, fairly significant, but that includes fixtures, shelving, books, everything that.
I'm curious, what's the insurance appraisal?
Um, it's about a million and a half.
Thank you.
But I don't think we'd get that.
Well, and like I said, it's got everything in it.
And all the furniture and fixtures. Uh, it's eighty-seven hundred square foot. Uh, and if you got a hundred dollars a square foot, that'd be eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but I'm not sure we'd get eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars either. But. All right, um. Anybody over here got any thing they want to say? We'll go on with the meeting.
I just want to speak about, on the, on the tax situation.
Okay.
Okay. Um, are you all planning on having a second reading tonight, is that what?
Yeah, we've, we've started, well, we're gonna have a hearing tomorrow, and then we'll vote after the hearing.
Okay. So tomorrow, tomorrow's is a, that's an input hearing, right, tax hearing? That's where you solicit the public's input on the tax rate, whether the public wants it or not, is that correct?
Okay.
They're free to go.
We'll have a hearing.
And that, it's supposed to be held prior to the first reading of the tax rates, correct?
I'm not sure where we're coming up with the first hearings and second hearings.
There's a, whenever you set a tax rate that exceeds a compensating rate, there must be two, two hearings, a first reading and a second reading. If you choose compensating, you don't, you don't have to do the, uh, second reading. Where you're choosing a rate that exceeds compensating, there must be a first reading, uh, must be a second reading. Prior to either reading, there must be a public tax hearing to solicit the public's input. The first reading that you all held was held illegally, uh, for two reasons. The first reason was there wasn't a form, that simply means there wasn't enough board members to officially hold the meeting. Uh, the second reason that meeting was illegal and, and is being re-held is because, um, it was not properly advertised to taxpayers and the public in the newspaper. Um, this second reading, or rather, the public tax hearing that you've got, uh, with this advertisement in the newspaper, um, is also an incorrect advertisement. There's several different guidelines that that ad must meet. If you look at KRS one thirty-two dot zero two three, and I'll be more than happy to leave this for your counsel to have a copy. Okay, thank you. It says, "A statement to the effect," this is, uh, one, KRS one thirty-two dot zero two three, section two, and that's gonna be two B eight. And it says, "A statement to the effect that the General Assembly has required publication of the advertisement and the information contained therein." Neither advertisement makes any mention to the, uh, General Assembly, other than in the first line. But it, but at the bottom of the ad, if you look at the other taxing districts, there's a specific sentence of verbiage that is just supposed to be in the advertisement, and that was omitted. The other thing is that this tax hearing, um, it also violates KRS one thirty-two dot zero two three, section two B six, um, where it states, "A time and place for the public hearing which shall be held not less than seven days, nor more than ten days after the date that the second advertisement is published." So the meeting is actually going to be held six days, um, after the date of the second advertisement, which therefore makes that meeting illegal on a second count. There's also a, uh, an option in here, KRS one thirty-two dot zero two three, section two C, that says, uh, "In place of the two published notices, a single notice containing the required information may be sent by first-class mail to each person owning real property in a special purpose governmental entity, addressed to the property owner at his residence or principal place of business as shown on the current year of property tax roll." So it's my understanding that since you're unable to fulfill the sixth requirement of the not less than seven days, that you must hereby mail a copy, um, via first-class mail to each and every taxpayer in the county. Um, the other thing is that the, uh, the first reading was not pub- properly published. It's my understanding that it was during a special meeting. However, anytime a tax rate, uh, reading is going to be read where the tax rate is set above compensating, it must be advertised in the leading, uh, newspaper. So it was not, um, properly advertised for the first reading. But I guess the main thing here is, you know, I understand there's been some change on the board, maybe board members aren't clear with, you know, how the law works in regards to open meetings, and when these meetings are supposed to be held. But the main point here is that the input hearing is to be held prior to any reading of the tax rates in order to give the public time to come and comment for or against the tax proposal. So we would hereby ask that you have a new tax hearing, uh, maybe go ahead and cancel the one tomorrow, or show up and dismiss it, and have another one, um, I guess, the, a month later. And in the meantime, uh, you know, promote it through the newspaper, and then after that special tax hearing, then do the first and the second reading of the rates.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Dennison. Does anybody else got anything?
Thank you.
I think we should have a moratorium on any raises in the tax rate until all these questions can be cleared up and all the legalities be put in the right places. Then have a, uh, a thorough audit of the property and its, and its all, its contents and the value of it. And then have a, a plan that says, if we do get a tax rate, if we do build another library, what's gonna happen to this library? I mean, it gets to show an interest for this church to have it. You know, if you fail to plan, your plan's gonna fail. You always gotta start with the end in mind. That's just simple business. So you gotta know what you're wanting to achieve, then how you're gonna achieve it, and what a step's gonna be. So just to throw money at it and say, "We'll handle it as we go," is not good sound business practice. No. So I would ask a moratorium to place on this, can you do all the sound business planning?
What plan would you like to see? I mean, what do you just talk about?
Well, we just got a plan now. From Giselle to buy part of the property, have you had any plan to sell property? Have you, you know, you said you had an appraisal for the taxes, but you haven't had a pr- a real estate appraisal? You don't know what the building and assets are worth, only through the insurance.
Well, it wasn't the phrase for the insurance, first of all. It's just what they, um, suggest that you have coverage on.
So it's what brings it all then.
But, but that, that, I don't know, I don't know where you're going, you know.
Yeah, so I'm not just saying.
The building is what it is.
Yeah, so it should be checked out, so the hospital wasn't checked out thoroughly, or it wasn't planned well, because you had to demolish.
Well, we talked about that last meeting, but it was our fault that the building.
Yeah, it's not your fault, it's not, it, it happens. But there wasn't a sound plan in there to say, if something happens to this building, are we gonna be liable?
All right, thank you, Mr. Barnard, we're gonna, we're gonna move on.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Anybody else got any concerns? Not, we're gonna go on and, uh, go ahead with our meeting, um, review the minutes.
I'll write over them to you.
I make a motion, you accept the next.
A motion?
We have two, we're, we have two, right, Melissa?
Yeah.
We were talking about the regular, we didn't, the second one.
That's something that they always tend to.
All right. So we got a motion, and a second?
Yes.
All right. For August the tenth? All in favors they have? Any opposed? So moved. And we'll do the August thirty-first meeting.
I make a motion, we accept the August thirty-first meeting.
Motion and second, all in favors they have? Any opposed? So moved. All right, move along to communications correspondence and director's notes.
Um, and most of the things that I have noteworthy, um, the only thing is the broadband consortium with state. We have to sign a, um, letter of agreement to dissipate with the consortium. And what that does is, the school systems have already been in the process of, if they file for E-rate, someone at the state does that for all the school systems of the group consortium. And KDLA has now, um, got everything in place that they are going to do that for all the libraries. Um, E-rate is a refund in the amount that's just been for internet. Um, right now, we have free internet from, from, um, Adelphi Cable, Tom Warner. Um, and once we go to the new building, we may or may not be able to, because that law that put it in place is no longer in existence. So we probably will have to go with E-rate. Um, but anyway, the state is doing a consortium so that they will file for everybody, if you're interested in doing that. Um, to be able to do that, we need a resolution so that I can sign the paperwork for that as it comes through.
So first you'll find out if we get the three?
Um, well, the thing is, is to be a part of the consortium, we have to be signed on by September twenty-eighth, because that falls into the whole federal year, you know, federal year starts October one. So that doesn't mean that we are going to actually do the E-rate, that doesn't mean we're gonna file, that just means when they apply to the federal government, they're saying, "All these people are part of this consortium." And that's just saying that we are, that doesn't mean we're obligated to do it.
Okay, that's good. Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, I think it's worded there, and I'll hand that up.
I mean, make a motion that I move that the Montgomery County Public Library Board of Trustees approve the E-rate consortium letter of agency, as prepared by the Kentucky Department for Libraries and Archives, and authorize the library director to sign the letter on behalf of the board.
I'm gonna need that back.
You remember that?
I'll second the motion, though.
Do you want a copy of the letter?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. That's all you have? All right, we'll move along to librarian's report.
See, the book, the book mobile's being squatted.
Um, she is, she's out, gotten all over it, as they go back into school, you know, preschool's actually just started, so it'll be got more.
That probably has a little bit to do with the circulation being down.
She picked up a new night, um, she's doing Tuesday nights and Thursday nights, both now, in community stops, um, public housing, several subdivisions.
What do you think's the, the reason for the big dip of Camargo?
Um, that's probably because everybody's been, you know, tied up, that's, you're looking at August numbers, so, as everybody's tied up in school, um.
Checkups, checkouts are way up there, with online books and audios.
So please, um, step on the library's report.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and second, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. We'll, uh, view the bank statement, activity. Verifile, the checks are properly signed.
Yes.
I don't know if I'm getting old, but I can barely read some of these.
Think you've just been close.
I know, done all I can.
It's the least away from the line, that'd be cool.
I don't think I'm out of words, huh? Those are signatures.
Uh-huh, yes, they are, separate papers.
That one signature of mine looks a lot like my signature.
Is, is there any question about it?
None on that sheet, I'm sure.
Okay.
No.
All right, then we look at the profit laws compared to the budget.
Just the maintenance of this building, I guess.
Um, that's where it's still doing all the repairs as stuff's come up in there. But their bathrooms are fixed from the water leaks.
Anything else that could've?
Explain a bit of salaries, you know, have the calculator on here, it looks like it's up, is that?
Um, it just depends on what's wrong, yeah, that paper is fault, but sometimes there'll be three checks in a month.
Two, seven months or three.
I hate when that happens.
Yeah, I hate to do, um, is there, was it gonna be any insurance? Insurance proceeds, right there?
There we go.
There we go, okay. That's part of this number here.
And the income, yes.
Yeah, all right. Uh, all righty.
I'll move, we accept the profit laws, I do.
All right.
Second, I agree with that.
Motion and second, all in favor? Any opposed?
I have a question, how much does it cost for the payroll to be done?
Done internally.
Paycheck.
It's done internally.
Done internally, so I mean, uh, you know, you're issuing fifty-two, twenty-six checks a year.
We don't do checks, it's automatic.
So I'm making a positive. We got the general ledger there that shows all the persons.
That Sam's Club was just the membership, right, behind it?
And the quilt.
That covers the laws, yes. The opposite laws.
This stone long care, that's the same company we've been using.
Chris, Jeff, Jeff, Greg, the general one.
Greg, yeah.
It looks better. They work, they spent a lot of weekend out there.
I didn't see anything else out of the ordinary.
Get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, except for general ledger.
All right, get a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, then we got the credit card activity.
I can add for him.
It's got a dollar tree on there, I went up there the other day, amazing much to get in there for a buck. I walked out with sixteen of them.
What's the thoroughbred?
How much it costs?
Oh, vacuum repair.
Sixteen dollars.
Oh, really? I'll make a motion, we accept the credit card statement?
I'll second.
Uh, motion and second, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Flash here.
All right, uh, librarian's report, financial statement, own business, Maria?
Yes. Well, we just need approval of construction documents to, uh, to bid tonight. We've got rendering and stuff on here, front of you, we've met and with John and Melissa, reviewed documents in detail, made a few tweaks, um, went through the finishes, interior and exterior, and they're happy with what we have. And of course, we, we get another round of, um, tweaks when we get the actual, some of contractors. Um, and we can leave these boards with you to, um, to show to the public. So this is all I have for tonight.
So we do.
Has it really changed since the last time we met, huh?
No, not really, we're just, you know, finalizing some of the details and wall sections and all that and stuff.
Yeah, it was done the little things, okay, is there a plug-in outside on this wall and this wall? Is there some water connected to be able to water plants?
How's the demolition go?
Yeah, I'll get to that.
I drove by there, it's flat, yeah, it was good.
They were still working there a little bit today, but I think they were just leveling it out, or whatever.
Walker should be giving us a report on that, including all that. So we'll be ready with phase three.
Okay.
Any, any more questions, uh, Maria?
Do we need a motion on that?
We need a motion just to approve construction documents and go to bid.
I'll make that motion, to approve construction documents and go to bid.
And the following steps would be, we'll be, um, submitting all documents to the Department of Housing Building and Construction, and Melissa has the check ready, um, that should happen this week, they usually take about two or three weeks. We can go on with advertising for bids and all that during that period, typically, they've already seen it, so there shouldn't be any kind of surprises, um, but they'll issue a letter with any comments, if there's comments, and then we incorporate these and, uh, go on, so. We'll be, uh, we'll need to figure out dates with you for, um, presenting the documents.
So I have before the next board meeting, probably?
Um, well, let me double check, um, we could try, it's, it's, it's gonna be very tight before the next board meeting. You wanna give at least two, three weeks of bidding time. Because we're gonna be getting questions from bidders, we gotta respond to those issued then, though, you gotta do it within a certain time.
Right.
Um, but everything's gonna go up on Len Imaging's website, and then they distribute Dodge, picks it up from there. We contact a list of contractors that we work with, so it's gonna be a lot of exposure. We've already been talking to a bunch of contractors, I've been getting calls already. So we should get good, good, hopefully a lot of numbers and hopefully tight.
I'll second Donna's motion.
All right, motion and second, all in favor? Any opposed, say no? So moved. All right, move along to new business, um, because first of all, we need to verify that we do have a board member open. That is correct. All right, so then we can talk about board member candidates. Do we have?
We've got one application right now, and we're looking, we just have to have the paperwork in, in October.
October? We have to get back to the, the state.
We have to have it get to the state and make it back to the county judge to make the appointment by February.
So first the KDLA looks at it? You've got that application on the website.
Uh, it's not on our website, I can put it on our website, I will pay, I can put it as a link off our website.
Yes.
What role does KDLA play in that, like?
Um, they do verifications mostly, you know, they look to make sure, okay, do they live in the county? Do they, you know, what information they can get? Do they, you know, what information they can get from, are they, um, qualified or they're not felon, you know, that kind of thing.
I wonder it took so long?
For me to be qualified.
All right.
Interesting.
So, when will be David's last board meeting?
January.
January.
You don't have to go.
They've already started the process.
Well, no, we just have to start the paperwork, um, get away, it won't be reapply.
This is the end of the, it's not the end of your term, is it? It's the end of the year.
Yeah, he came down.
He's, he's filling out a candidate petition.
Oh.
But he can use a national wire.
Well, he could do two terms, if he was coming on. All right.
We still have time.
So, um. We got any ideas on how to, uh?
Well, I'll get the application on site.
Yeah? Okay.
And I can run it out, last time we ran an ad in paper.
I think, I think we ought to, let's try to be as transparent as we can before somebody says no.
Yeah, yeah. Put it on our Facebook page.
Yeah.
It's been on Facebook page.
Maybe we need to get on already with.
Maybe we need on radio, anyone to talk about.
Get some other sandwich up here.
Of course, day's coming up.
Yeah, it's coming, all right, um, be ready to move on to the next thing. All right, staff retention policy.
And they're there, but, um, you wanna look over probably in support?
Yes, I know, if you need it.
Okay.
So, we can.
We'll take that until next meeting ends, until our attorney has a chance to look it up.
That's a good idea.
What, what were you telling?
Um, the two policies were on your left-hand side.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Roberts has resigned in writing in effective time. And the board has accepted that, is that?
No, we're not accepting.
He, his, his term is up at the end of January.
Oh, I see, okay, so, it ends that, uh, December thirtieth?
Yes. Well, it'll be January, February will be the year first.
I see.
I don't know how they ended up with terms in, on February through January, but.
So, we just have to go, yeah, what do we have to turn it into?
Um, like I said, it has to be there, um, will this be a KDLA, uh, personal labor?
Okay.
To give them, to get sufficient time to get it to. Um, he usually, depending on when he gets the paperwork back, it's either December or January, I think he makes those appointments.
Okay. Anybody else got any business?
Mm-hmm.
Um, KDLA representative's not here, so, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
What? What, well, what, what is our response to, uh, Mr. Denson's comments about our meeting tomorrow?
I'll review it. I haven't seen the aim. I'll review it.
Also, I would like to mention, there is, uh, possible litigation being discussed too, if they don't redo it again.
Well, that's a surprise.
Yeah, can't believe that. You want us to save money and you keep suing us, so we're spending money defending it.
Just follow the law.
Makes a lot of sense.
Just follow the law.
Constitution's not right.
That's right, that's why we have laws.
I make a motion, adjourn.
You got a motion?
Okay.
You got a second?